As you can see, we've got two aldermen up here. We've got one that's had surgery and one's out of town who is on the phone. This is Amy Livingston. She's called in. And Kevin Dale is gonna be a little late. He's supposed to be here. But we're gonna go ahead and get started with general city business. And there's Kevin Dale. We'll go ahead and start with general city business. Okay, item general city business, item A is approval of claims docket for date of 2018. Got most of my will, have a second. Second by Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Got most of your curiosities. Item B is the highway 30 starting traffic light up, Dave. I have no idea, Dave. I think I'm leaving that on there. Hopefully it will get done one day, but we're still getting the same issue. State doesn't have any money to do one right now. Same way with the Snyder River Road Bridge. Amphitheater access road. I'm gonna ask Bill and Jean Tracy to tell what y'all know about why we need to get to the...
Well, I know it had been discussed originally when the concert series came. And really just a safety issue because if we don't have a road coming in from the side that leads directly to backstage, the cars basically come through like the walking pathway and some like over through the grass. And just, I guess, as a mom and a teacher, it's really dangerous. And they drive very slowly, granted, but I just think of one child getting away from a parent or someone not paying attention and getting hit, and we will never have another festival because I would not. It was just, if that were to happen, I mean, we couldn't in good conscience. So I just, that's my thoughts.
And it's fine, I mean, it's okay pre-concert because they can get in there. It's after they finish all the trucks.
Well, and during too.
Yeah. Anyway, we discussed a route that Sam Preetma went down there and marked the trees that need to be cut. And really, you come across the creek and you just run along beside the creek, not getting too close to it. And I think there's like three trees. The rest of them are dead, or he said they weren't good trees. But there's three good, pretty good ones that need cutting. None of them are just real huge. But one of them that he said was dying of those three, so we're making a statement. Anyway, we gotta cut two or three, and they looking for gravel. I guess gravel's all we need right now. Drive into the stage.
So when you come off Carter, the little bridge right there, immediately take a left?
After you cross it.
Right, after you cross it.
And just follow the creek.
Just follow.
I was trying to look at it, and I couldn't really determine.
Until I walked it, I couldn't figure out either. But I was like, oh, I see how it goes.
Then it would be really big with John circle.
Do what? It's three or four, I can't remember. He marked them that. I think there's like maybe three significant ones and one's...
Like a small, like a little rack tree.
Yeah, that's kind of a trash tree or something.
They're not very big trees there. So for what we'd have to do, it wouldn't be a lot of work for us to cut those trees.
Okay. They're not very big trees. Bill's in here, and he's already looked at them too. But nothing major. No.
So basically, we're...
How much is it gonna cost to take the road?
Well, just whatever the gravel. I don't know. Honestly, I don't have any loads of gravel. It'd be the minimum amount of gravel that we put through there.
I'd like to table this till I get a chance to look at it. One of these first weeks. Talked about it, but the previous board is brought up by past tourism director, the previous board shot that down of cutting trees.
He shot it down?
No, he wanted to have it done in the previous board, which was before y'all came on, but didn't want to cut the trees and didn't have the money to build a road. We spent the money to build the amphitheater. I'd like to table, have a chance to look at it, see what tree to cut, and how much it's gonna cost for the road.
If you do it next month, how long does it take to do that?
Yes.
For us to cut the trees, it probably is days. God, if things help us, we'll get done in a day.
And since something has been assessed for several years, the man has trouble getting in there, and that's a problem.
Right.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, but whatever. We all are. It's terrible out there.
Yeah, he's there.
I know we got two ways now to the park. You sure your trucks hold that bridge?
I'm not really sure what the pass of that bridge is. And although we crossed it, I don't know what the pass is. We can go in the other way, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to cross the bridge to get back there.
But I think we still have some money. No, we have some money through another grant that, what's it called? That we did this arch out here with, we still have money left over and need to apply toward that road. We got like, what, 60, 60,000 left.
When's our next event out here, Dan?
Oh.
River Fest, end of September.
End of September.
Arch, complete through the...
We got it delivered.
She's not giving us anything left. Tim needs a corner, doesn't want a corner.
Yeah, we can do it with money. We got that. I don't think a road would cost over $5,000 if it hit that much.
Should we come out of this budget running if we wait until August meeting? Should we come out of this budget later?
Either way, we got some grant money left from the state that we did the arch with, you know, that we applied for a year or so ago. We've got to spend it within the next year. We got about 60,000 left on here.
So here's my question. If we wait until, if we table it until August, is there enough time to get it done for September or then? Or, I mean, Tracy, I'm asking Tracy, Billy, and the community development, they think it needs to be done right now?
Well, of course, I'm gonna say yes. I mean, you know.
Because you looked at it, it's an old problem. Bill, you walked it. So we had the people walk it, so.
The only problem, it probably needs some time to settle. You know, I don't know if we did it in the middle of August, it wouldn't be the situation. I don't know. It's still gonna be settled.
I asked Sean today too if, in the past, tour buses got back there. And he said they did. They went through the field. So this weekend wasn't as bad because they had most of the fans.
Yeah.
But if you get a big name act, they're gonna have tour buses. It's just a logistical problem all the way around.
Is there not another ditch in parallel to that ditch that they didn't cross now?
Not coming in that way. You can run along the west side of the ditch.
We thought at first we could just jut out to the back, but then that's private property. It'd be expensive.
We'd have to build a bridge anyway. It would be very expensive to come off north.
There's another walking bridge in there. I don't know if that's a ditch or not.
No, there's a big ditch right there.
There's a small ditch that ties into the bigger ditch.
Well, I think that we, I think we need to do the road, but if we'll table it and go look at it, then that's... Bill says that the trees can come down in a day. So if Will's not comfortable voting on it tonight, then we vote on it. And the River Fest is at the end of September, so.
Say for me?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item A. You stopped sign placement award one. Amy, you wanna take it?
Yes, I wanna make a motion to put a stop sign at the corner of... Does the lawyer get to know?
Yeah.
Jefferson and Garfield.
Can you come up to us, I think I'm gonna tell them exactly where it needs to go.
Yes, Jefferson and Garfield, he said.
I've got some pictures here. There's two way there right now. There's just two ways. And there's, there's four ways at Garfield and Adams, and four ways at Garfield and Madison. But the street that you really needed is right here. I've got pictures. Everybody can look at them, you know. And then, I mean, you can't even see the streets on it coming up Jefferson.
And I'm talking to Johnny, and he's on with it. He said, well, he thinks that he's assigned to be in there, thinks that he would probably go, I talked to Ray in today. I don't think there's anything in our ordinance that says that he thinks that it's her business for doing it. I looked into it, it's in my warrant, and really, I'm making a motion to put a stop on there.
Okay.
So there'll be two stop signs.
Yeah, there'll be one from each direction. Make a four-way stop in the other direction.
I see. I see. Is it a four-way or three-way?
It's two-way right now. But it'd be a four-way.
It's duck and scoot is what it is now.
Then it would turn into a four-way stop. Now, we got most of my Amy's second, but Keith, Keith, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Got most of your curiosities?
Thank you.
Okay. Can we give it a picture? You don't need pictures. No. We're gonna skip to item G, food truck ordinance. You don't think it's ready, Amy?
I don't. I mean, that's my opinion. I'm not comfortable that, I'm sorry, guys. I'm talking to the restaurant owner today. I will tell y'all, I talked to the restaurant owner, and everybody's fine with C1 and most of that we have. I just don't think we'd have a public influence yet on it. I don't know, so that's my opinion.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then to, is everybody okay with that? Okay, we're gonna move on to municipal court, court of training certificate. Okay, we just need to put that on minutes.
They do their training every summer, and they're required. No need to be... Need a motion?
Yeah. Okay, got most of Kim Dale's second. But will you have any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Got most of your curiosities? Item I is approval of payment request number five on the SNA industry project. SB construction estimate number five for SNA industry is 15,849. And three rivers administration of SNA is 6,000. Got most of my will, have a second. Second by Keith, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? An approved request for cash authorization number five for SNA project of 21,849, which are these two combined. Got most of my will, have a second. Second by Amy, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Now, we're gonna move up to departmental business. Now, we're gonna go to 1100 Pebblewood Public hearing. We'll go back to the top. Is anybody here concerned 1100 Pebblewood? All right, Eric, you need to do anything else?
We sent the public hearing on the other side of the paper. You need to look at that. I think Joey showed y'all pictures last month. Y'all need to see them.
Which one is it?
This one. Yes.
What's your recommendation on that?
Go ahead, Condemn it.
So the property is titled, and Robert Green, he's deceased. You want any note behind any airs?
I talked to a team of Gilbert and David Green, and neither one of them was interested in the property. And then on 6/25, we got notice that someone was over there cleaning it up, and it was something nephew of somebody's, like Robert Green, to tell him it's condemned, so they left.
Okay, so you got the publication notice to the air, so none of ours? Were there any other letter notices sent out? All right, go ahead and address what's wrong, what's probably different.
Well, it's not fit to live in. It's, the roots came in, flowers are coming in, so it's pretty much a unsafe property. And not maintained.
Go ahead and pass around your prior notice, prior letters, number five, and a deficiency.
I actually started contacting people about the property, and they haven't said anything. They said...
So other than asking the board to determine if they've had proper notice, what else are you asking the board to determine today?
To have the property tore down.
You want them to determine that it's unfit for human hesitation and to, basically to condemn it, and if I remember correctly, just say that it will be demolished within 30 days if they don't do the same.
I think we got most of Kevin Dale to condemn it and then have it demolished within 30 days. Second by Keith.
You have to 30 days, not 10.
After 30. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Okay, now we got a public appearance from the river green.
Good evening, thank you. Board of Aldermen, Mayor, I have a personal appearance I wanted to come before you to ask for. I've gone through Mr. Thomas, and we went through the zoning commission. I have a building at 706 South Central. You're not aware of where I am. I'm right across from Johnny's.
City board?
The city, yes. And we built there 15 years ago, metal building before the ordinances, I believe, came in that when we have the metal structures, it had to be a different type frontage. What I'm asking the board to do is give me consideration. We're building a 40 by 50, before and after, basically room for the before and afters kids, to allow me to have that building aesthetically the same color and kind as the one that we have now. It could be a metal building that's being provided by Reed's Metal.
Got most of my Kevin Dale, have a second.
Second.
Second by Amy, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Got most of your curiosities?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's move to department business. I'd like to ask some water, beer, get any...
Will, you and Kevin, if you remember this, the previous board got permission to advertise for construction assistance. We had a contract in the past, but it changed on just the time that lasted. Anyway, the board gave you permission, but I've just not gone to the process of doing out to advertise and get the paperwork. Anyway, that's been over a year, and I feel like it's probably answered permission to do that again. This for construction assistance for our water, gas, sewer pipe jobs.
Got most of my will, have a second. Second by Kevin Dale, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Got most of your curiosities?
Thanks.
We need to vote.
I mailed you my report, Tracy's report, yesterday, and we had a great festival, Free Fest, and our next festival. And big planning will be River Fest in September, but nothing else.
Eric, thank you. Police Department, Chris, you got any help in this time? Okay, thank you. Fire Department.
I'm sorry.
All right. Bill Inspector.
I emailed a report last night. The zoning meeting a request for rain trees at 104 South River, the bench for a sign requirement. They'd like to use the upcoming sign ordinance for the placement of the sign, and it was approved as I mentioned.
Okay. That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move down, back down to item F on general city business, the sign ordinance discussion. Anybody here concerned sign ordinance? I want to...
In regard to the sign height on the interstate corridor, having been being lower to 50 foot by the new proposed ordinance that we discussed last month, have y'all come to a decision on whether to leave that at 50 feet as it's written in the new version, or go back to the 100 feet, bearing in mind the height of the trees planted on Park Plaza that could reach a height of 70?
The latest version I saw was still at 50, I believe. But there were some changes done today and yesterday.
Eric, you got any...
Unless anybody checked, I think the answer is that we left it as it was to discuss as an open issue to discuss. So no changes.
You guys did. Eric.
Yeah, let me see what we put in there.
Is that 100 now, Eric?
Yes.
From the present ordinance?
Yeah, that's what I think.
So one option is, I've heard, I mean, I've asked lots of people, so it's 100 now, 50 is a common, it's common height of lots of places. And then, I know there's, we talked about the trees that have been told up, that they were gonna, you know, that it's gonna be talked about in the August meeting, so I don't plan that that's gonna be a concern. I've compromised it to be 75 feet, or, I mean, I'm, of course, I'm, honestly, I'm with 50, but, I mean, if you need 50, y'all want to compromise it at 75, doesn't change what we made today. Everything's pretty much what we, we talked about. The only, I've got, it's all the aldermen have given their input, the people in the community have given their input. The only thing that was done today is, is just, the things were tweaked for the people that had it added, you know, added to their comments, but it was nothing. The 50 foot is still in there right now as the sign ordinance was written when we did the first draft.
There was also open for discussion in the last public meeting, something about potential for pillboards along that 22 corridor. Were there any decisions made on that or discussions had at all between yourselves on whether or not that was a viable option or one that should be left out?
There were a lot of discussions, and I haven't found, I mean, I'll let the other board members talk. You already know how I feel, Harry. I don't, I don't want, I don't think pillboards are the way to raise people up to interstate. That's my opinion, but I'll let the other aldermen talk if they want.
Anybody else got an opinion? From Bill.
Any conversations that I had with anybody in the public were not for billboards. Didn't have, as a matter of fact, didn't talk to a whole lot of people, but didn't have anybody say that they were for billboards. Same thing for me.
I know Johnny emailed today, and he was against Bill Ward, and his email. He's had surgery.
And I've had several people tell me they got one.
What do y'all think about 75? That suits you too. Not really, but that's a compromise.
I'm just making my opinion. Non-public, it's really up to y'all. I do believe that even if the trees are potentially gonna be removed, I think 75 is a better option than 50 for sure.
Now, Eric had a good point today. I hadn't thought about it. The sooner you get down to Park Plaza, you think, even if the trees weren't there, the taller you'd think the sign to be, to be visible from the pool.
And that would be my main argument for the 100 feet is the distance from the highway needing to be taller, to be seen over the trees and existing buildings.
I think a concrete barrier is gonna be more problems than the trees. If you're traveling west.
If you're traveling west in a car, in a truck, I don't believe it would be, even traveling east, except for not in a Chevy.
And again, y'all, it's debatable whether the signs are what pull you off the interstate, or is it, you know, like, if I'm driving somewhere, I'll go, oh, there's a load, so I'm gonna go buy some wood real quick. I mean, that's what pulls me off. Like, if I'm looking for one, I'm gonna Google search it, or it's gonna be on a sign on the, you know, signs of the road. Anyway, I'm just, you know, y'all know how I feel, or you talk about, but I just think it's static matter, and all these different types of signs. That's not, I don't, that's what, I mean, y'all can look it up, but I don't think that's what's pulling people in for accounting.
I think 75 feet is probably agreeable. I personally wouldn't think that it would need to be any shorter than that at all, but I think 75 feet is acceptable now.
What was the height in the previous? What was?
Cracker Barrel sign is 100 feet.
That's our standard, says it.
Yeah. And that's one thing you need to think about is, you know, big companies like that come, usually they'll adjust to the city's ordinance, but it's my, my...
Tracy, you talking about Kentucky?
Cracker Barrel, that's a sign that pulled me off the interstate. Their standard is 100 feet.
And that particular business they rely on, and I'm a little fuzzy in my numbers, but it's either 65 or 70% of their business is pulled directly from the highway.
Yeah, 65.
So signage, like I stated in last month's meeting, is a very, very high budget, budget issue for these national tenants. It does work. They wouldn't spend the money to build 100-foot sign if they didn't think that it was worth their money, because a sign is very expensive. And companies like Tractor Supplies, as stated last month, paid additional premium just to have an easement to be able to get their sign closer to Park Plaza so that it would be more visible, since they weren't directly on the frontage. They paid, I believe, it was an extra $75,000 for a five-foot wide easement to go from their property out where their sign is, for the sole purpose of this building. It is very important to them. I do believe 75 feet is the bare minimum, but it should be, I'm more in favor of 100 foot. I did not hold a seat on that board, so I'll leave that up to y'all. That's my opinion, but I...
Wait, no. What y'all think? You was good with 75?
Yes.
Should be compromised?
Yeah.
Should be compromised?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, anybody got anything else concerning sign ordinance?
Amy, you sent an email. Can you hear me?
Can you hear Reagan?
I can. We didn't want to get a new point here.
You sent an email saying there were a few issues up, and are all of those resolved, or even those we need to do?
I mean, they're all resolved as far as, like, I've talked to all the aldermen. I think that's it. That's, that's one of the people that hold, it's just, there's been kind of a question amongst people, like, do we get rid of poles? Do we not get rid of poles? And we, we can do a compromise on that, too, where we do pile-on, which is just kind of a dressed-up pole, basically.
Okay, so...
Instead of getting rid of poles altogether, so we all kind of, that's already a difference in there, and affect all that. I think we're all in agreement.
Okay, so am I correct in that as far as those issues are concerned, the present draft of the ordinance is to your satisfaction?
It is to my satisfaction. I'm, I'm doing that we pass it, we move it, we move it up law, or whatever, I don't know how to say it.
Does the height of the pile-on signs listed in the version that you have, that she says is amended, does it match the height that was in the version that was discussed in last month's meeting?
What's the height of a pile-on sign?
Does it change from last month to this month?
Has it changed from last month?
No.
So it's 20 feet or 35?
It's 20.
20 feet.
So everybody agreed if you have a pile-on sign, 25 feet? I mean, 20? So, everybody agreeing that you have a pile-on sign, twenty-five feet, I mean, twenty feet, and no poles, huh? With the pile?
It's just a thing.
Yes, it's a square. Now, that's the only other thing that I remember.
Isn't that right in the amendment that you made today for the, the buildings downtown being flush with the, with the buildings instead of protruding out? That's in this current? It is, uh, in C one, it is, it's, do we, do, what do we do in C two?
Exactly.
After we didn't touch that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the signs have to be flush in C one, but they're all except for this little corridor right across the street there.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be, you couldn't see it, they would have had to have a sign for us. Oh, now, there's been some talk about monument signs. Is this new?
There's been nothing new talk about monuments.
Didn't you say Farm Bureau wanted a monument sign, Amy?
Well, the Farm Bureau right now has a pole sign, but there are no pole signs allowed in C one, so they would have to, they, and there's not monuments on there that were not allowed in C one, so they would have to get a, a deal, if that's what they were accusing to do. But that's the current ordinance and the new ordinance, C one has got no monument and no pole, except there's monuments on that section of Main Street that we made an allowance for, which is from Talan, to the, from the bridge to Talaco, you know?
Yeah.
We made allowance for a monument there, because they're, that's kind of already, but then, right now, the way it's written, there are no monuments in C, C one or, and that's, that was from, that, we took that from the old ordinances, they kind of kept it like that. But I think we were all in agreement on that, no monuments and no poles.
Well, what about?
The Farm Bureau, they think when a monument, they're going to, they're going to have to, you know, get a variance.
People's got pole signs now, are they grandfathered, Reagan?
As long as they were either approved under the old ordinances or not conforming, they would be, yes.
But, like, Fred is just illegal, like, they just did it, I think.
They're pole sign?
No, Fred's big, whatever sign it is, whatever they get.
Oh, on the front of the bill?
It's not a pole, but it's a, whatever it is.
Okay.
Ten long time, I guess, long.
All right, we got a motion on the table, see.
And that motion is for the ordinance in most recent form, except for changing fifty feet to seventy-five feet on the interstate corridor pole signs.
Hey, there was one more question, Reagan, I just thought, I'm sorry, I forgot that mention, I think you and Eric fixed it, but some people had some questions about window signs, and they wanted to make, the thing is, is it looks like you can only put them in the interior?
Yeah, we fixed that.
You fixed that, okay.
Yeah.
That's it, that's all, y'all, I mean, I'm getting ready, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm making my mission.
All right, we're going to make a motion to approve it, I have a second.
Second.
Second, my Keith, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got a motion carries. All right, uh, anybody else got anything?
The only thing I want to say, if anybody has any, um, if they want to tell us, like, the public, well, I think they need to put these, I think they have opinion about food truck ordinance, they need to let us know if we're going to pass, we are going to bring that in August, we've got to pass it.
Okay. All right, if not, we got one other thing we need to say, uh, we need to do, make things, say, personnel deal.
Yeah, one thing about food truck, the most recent, uh, version of it, I'll leave a copy with her in case any of you or anybody else wants to see it. What's that? Uh, we, you don't have to do a public hearing, I'm glad because it's not zoning, so we've already passed, uh, so we could pass it anyway.
All right, one other thing, we got executive session for personnel matter, uh, most considered executive session.
Hey, Jim, can you give a little more information on the personnel?
Like, like, what do you want to give?
I mean, what, can you tell what department or?
Yes, the police department.
Okay. I just know, people have been asking, they want more, a little more information.
Okay, we can announce what, if, the decision we make when we come out.
This is an continuation of the last one.
Continuation of the last one.
I will explain one thing, there's actually two different personnel parts of, of executive. The one we normally use is A, so paragraph A, this one's actually some paragraph K, it's slightly different, uh, if anybody wants to look that up, it's not about, uh.
So we're going down.
It's not about an individual, it's about a structure, personnel structure.
Under subsection K, you say?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion, Kevin?
Second.
Second, will we, any questions or discussion? Don't ask. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're being the executive session.